Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. This is the Thursday, October the 24th, 2024. Regular school board meeting of Wasika Public Schools. And we are in Central Building, second floor conference room, and it's 5:30. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic of Croatia and its citizens. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move we approve the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of visitors. Not seeing any tonight, but we have a new person here with us, a new business manager. Sarah, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name's Sarah Cramblett. I was born and raised in Mankato. I went to college at the St. Louis Adolphus. And then out of college, I took a job working for CLA, Clifton Larson Allen, a public accounting firm. With CLA, I was an auditor and spent 10 years auditing school districts. From CLA, I went to Owatonna Public Schools to work as a controller and did that for almost eight years. And so here I am now. That's me professionally. Personally, I have two kids, a senior and a freshman at Mankato East High School. And they keep me very busy outside of work, as many of you can imagine.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Sarah has done excellent work. We're very fortunate that not only did we select her, but she selected us. And I think she's going to continue to make our team stronger and continue the great work for our district. So welcome aboard.
All right, well, welcome.
Thanks.
And all right, next item, payment of claims. Mr. Prebe.
Thank you. So I reviewed the claims for the month of September and recommend actual payment for these claims. The accounts payable, $1,451,886.53. The August dental, amount of $14,676.15. The September dental of $16,741.55. And then the payroll of $960,315.22. I move for payment on that.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the claims for the month of September. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I just have one question for Eric. Can you explain the work of our content slash culture mentors?
I can. So they're assigned to mentor new staff in the building. And so as we have new staff, they're all assigned an official mentor, and that's how that, so that's what they do. They support, they ask questions, they're there to help them with planning. And in addition to the TOSA work we do, that's also part of that work.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the consent agendas, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along, Dr. Hutsbath.
Thank you. Well, good evening. And for this month's report, we're going to spend the time focusing on the 2024-25 vision card and seeing what we've done starting the school year. We've already off to the races with some of these things, so it's pretty exciting to see. So I'll go item through items here and just talk about some celebrations and some things we're at. Now, we measure these, we do a benchmark in the fall, as well as we'll measure them again in the spring to see what our progress has been. If you remember last year, students reporting safe and secure was something that caught us off guard a little bit lower. So we're measuring that based on the holistic, do I feel my school's a safe place to be this fall? We're at 81%. So we're already seeing growth over where we were this last spring. Annual attendance, you'll notice that the language here says, students attend 90% or more. That's the language that the Minnesota Department of Education uses, and that means that's the percent of students that attend 90% of the time. And so it's the percentage of a percentage in some way. So we know we have in the mid 90s for attendance on any given day. So our daily attendance looks really good. However, we're at about 71% of our students that actually attend 90% or more as individuals. And that's activities, family vacations, illness, other school functions. So right now, we're doing some analysis to determine if some of those are actually attendance issues, or if they're just, that's the way that kids have to be flexible with their lives and working through that. 71% feels low to me, and so we're looking through what that calculation looks like. We don't have students right now who are showing significant attendance issues that aren't already on our radar that we're supporting. So it's not as if somebody came up that wasn't already someone we were supporting, but that new way of measuring is the way the state's going that way, so we're doing that to go along with it. So we'll be watching that state attendance. As I mentioned last time, I think, or the time before, there is a task force legislatures thinking about having for student attendance, and they're measuring it this way. So this is one of those things we have to be aligned with, so we don't give inaccurate information when we're asked to report what Wasika's seeing. For grades nine through 12, students on track to graduate by credit accrual, this is really exciting this fall. 96% of our grade nine through 12 students at the high school are right now on credit for a four-year graduation based on their four-year plans. At the ALC, this is really exciting, 62% of our ALC students are right now on track to graduate in four years based on their credit accrual. Part of that is I just talked to Mandy today, Mandi Nohner, and we have a huge celebration at our ALC. For our first hex semester, 40 of the 70 students who attend our ALC this term passed all seven of their classes. And so that's by far the highest amount of students we've had passing classes at the ALC. And that is directly attributed to, in some, directly is probably a strong word, I think there's a high correlation between the cultural accountability support that they have in place, they're aligned this fall. Mandy did some significant work this summer and worked with all of her staff around how do we support kids. So one of the things our students were reporting was, by teacher, by teacher, I might get a different response. So if I'm just sitting in my class not doing anything, some teachers might just leave me alone. Some teachers might just tell me to kick me out of class. And some teachers might say, hey, how can I help you today? And now they're working through it in such a way that they're all responding with support. This is not something that the teachers had any problem with, they just had to get aligned up and get going, because we've got great teachers in there. But kids are getting more support for their whole student approach, and I think it's showing with those results. So that's exciting, we have the kids graduating, on track to graduate, I mean. And that's in the four years. So I know ALC sometimes takes longer than that, but if we can get them through in four years, that's even better. Our fall data for K8 students and really ninth grade as well, reading at grade level, so we were in the 40s here in the spring. And right for our fall benchmark assessments, we've got 57% K3, reading at proficient per their fast bridge test, which is growth for sure. And 61% grades four through nine. Their NWA is at or above benchmark for grade level. So we certainly want that to be higher, right? But we're seeing significant growth in that already, and some of that's attributed to our literacy instruction, you know, with the Amplify Curricula resource, but more importantly, the instruction that our staff is going through. And you'll be considering the MOU for the redact training on the action items tonight, but I have yet to talk to a teacher who has said that's not great professional development. It's a lot of work. We're not going to pretend that's not a lot of work. And so it has been taxing on time, but it is truly getting our literacy instruction where it needs to go. So I think when it comes to students on the vision card, we're off to a great start here for 2024-25 with that piece. You know, scroll up a little bit there, Amy. As we look at staff retention, staff retention, we set that as a three, I'm sorry, I'm in the, yeah, staff, go to staff there. We have staff retention over a three-year period. We're still gathering information, because we haven't had a three-year period yet since we started this push and some of these retention strategies. However, I will say that right now, we're looking at in that level four, level five. We don't have a significant turnover issue. And you can see it from the resignations or lack thereof, you see each month, our staff is staying with us, and we're having some success keeping it that way for everything too. Our staff survey, feeling that everyone is safe, heard, and valued. Again, really seeing some positives there. We're at minimum, we're at level three with some low 60s percent at one of our buildings, but well over in the 70s and 80s in other buildings as well. So we'll do that again this spring, but right now, we know that we're doing pretty well, but it is very much building by building. And so I've had conversations, and Brooke's had conversations with particular principals on how we support each of our sites, and we hope to see some growth there in that area. Professional development, and a reminder, these are all tied to our desired daily experiences that we did. Our staff wanted to work in a place that provides relevant PD for them. They feel like they're getting what they need. And from our fall back-to-school workshop, 87% of the teachers that responded reported that it was a high-quality training and PD they had at workshop week. So that was really good, that we had a really strong, and I want to say, if I remember the exact number, it would have been, if anybody on the DAC committee remembers the exact number, it was something like 80-some teachers that replied to that. So just about half of our teaching staff replied to that survey, so that was positive. And as far as being relevant, which is sometimes the harder one, when you have teachers that teach all different areas, 82% of the teachers that responded reported the PD was relevant as they came back to school too. So that's a positive thing as well. So looking good as far as how we support staff on the vision card as well. On the staff one, I would just mention really quickly, it's not really on the vision card, but it's something I want to make sure I mentioned, because it's going to be, you're going to see the open enrollment information coming soon. So we did get our insurance renewal. As expected, we were, you know, a pretty significant increase, 17.7% was the lowest bid to stay with our current provider with everything there. We did get other bids, and they were up in the 20s and 30s, and so that was where we are. And so working with our insurance committee, that's where we'll be heading out and continuing to support staff with that. It did, the two-year renewal does include a 15% cap for the second year, so we hope we don't achieve the cap, but we know it won't be higher than that. But it's not really, again, when we talk about staff, it just made me think of, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that to the board too, so as you're hearing that. Our staff is highly in tune with the stresses of that particular topic, but also understanding that we're a good partner with that as best we can, and we're continuing to work with them on that area. So that's that.
Can I ask a question? I would like to see, you were talking in which category we are belong today after, you know, fall survey. I would like to see color for fall. For example, you said, you know, if you go up, you know, for the grade students are, you know, 81, 90% on track, if you just highlight the square for each of the category and maybe do, and compare what was in a spring?
Sure.
That we have to visual, I'm sorry, I'm very visual person.
Yep.
And I know you are taking notes, I'm not. It's mean if I have just those two sheets, I could see the progress right away.
Very good.
If you could do that, it would be very visual, I think. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, good. If you scroll down to the next one there, Amy, down to families. This one, we're gathering information for the fall. So this we measure by portal accounts, conference attendance, how often that families are engaging with their teachers and school staff based on the things we can measure. And we know that school engagement is different for every family, and so we have to be cautious that we don't consider it to be too one-size-fits-all. I probably am guilty of not going to my high school students' conferences, because at this point, we were, other things going on. However, I am active on the portal, you know, to see what's going on with their daily work with that option too. So we're gathering that information for the fall, so we don't have any data yet for that one. The building exit office survey, we're doing that again this year. We did October last year, this year we're going to do November and see how, as people enter the building, as they exit the building, they'll see, did we get what we need? Do we understand what we had? Last year, it was 100%, we did it both in the spring and the fall. And so I don't know that this will remain as a measure going forward, but we're going to do it for at least a second year, so that we know we have accurate information, or at least some longevity for information there. And then again, for the third one, one of the things that families had asked for was real-world experiences inside out of the classroom. And so you can see it in May, we were looking at, we were in that progress area, at least three per trimester, we're trending there already here this fall as well, real-world experiences. So very good. Good deal. If you go down to the district one then, Amy. So, and then these areas, the first three are areas that we saw last year, and both did very, and did very well in those. Facilities are safe, accessible, and clean, and we're in the, we're in progress area there, we always can do better. Accessibility is probably our biggest hang-up there with everything, and that was something we did in the spring, and we'll reassess that here at the end of this school year as well. There's nothing new for this fall in there as projects begin. Communicating with the school district, we're still communicating regularly through social media, through community communications, newsletters, and, sorry, newspaper articles and such. We've been talking more, Amy and I, about how we do some more regular district communication. We learned some things this spring, and I'm sorry, this summer and fall, how we can do some things differently without duplicating building work. We still want the school to be the closest relationship for each family, but we don't want to duplicate, or we don't want to miss some big district things sometimes that we can communicate there. So tuned to work on that as well. Again, we'll measure that again here as the school year goes on. We continue to be prepared for emergency situations, we don't have any concerns there other than working with Brian Herring. This is a repeat of this, continue with the spring's conversation, is we continue to work on cybersecurity, how we continue to support all of our devices, and we don't have any issues, but we're continuing to watch it. As you recall though, I think it was September when I was at MASA, that weekend of internet outage, and it started based on a, you know, a potential electrical issue here at the building. But what it actually came out to be was, the reason why the internet could not come back on right away is because it was our firewall that was the item not coming back up. And we couldn't open up our internet traffic without having that ready to go, because it would last all about two seconds before it got shut down again by what typically is trying to get into the district. And so continuing to work on that, working with South Central Service Cooperative now on some different ways to be a little bit more, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, maybe stable, or a little bit beef up our opportunities there. And Brian's looking at that. Part of our challenge with technology right now is some of the age of our systems, our door securities, as many of you've experienced that with your fobs, going in and out, we have some challenge with our, the cameras are all perfectly functional, and they work really well, but they're aging. And their functionality is different than what technology probably could provide in 2024. So working closely with Brian Herring and how we can continue to, and Jeff Jensen, are there opportunities to upgrade there over time, that option. The last one on the bottom is one that was not there last year, is a new one. And we had listed it here as we're going to do it this fall, and that's establishing high-quality community partnerships with local businesses. And Jack Arpin, our career pathway counselor at the high school, has got, really making some strong connections here. And we've had this on the, in the past, and as we develop it from administrator to counselor, teacher-driven, it made sense to come back here, talk about those community partnerships doing. Now, there's a rubric within a rubric of what high-quality community relationship, partnership looks like, that Brooke and Jack and Jason Miller at the high school have created, that I didn't feel, I didn't clappy and paste here, that would be a really long box. But the point is, we want to make sure we have a good number of high-quality community partnerships. 12 is a number, because that's right around where we currently are. That's how that got to be the baseline right there. Now, we work with much more than 12 community partners, but as we define what this high-quality active list looks like, we want to continue to grow that. I don't know if 16 or 20 is the number, but we're going to work on it and spend some time growing that this year, and we'll see where that takes us for the next, for the next school year. So that's the 2024-25 feedback, vision cards. The reason why I'm bringing them to you today in a report format is just, for example, that's exactly like what Adita said, I can make adjustments, I can send them back out to you. In November, I will ask you to actually formally approve the vision cards. So if you have any feedback on how, what you'd like to see formatted differently, there hasn't been any changes to our goals, they're based on a strategic plan, so there probably isn't any, a whole lot there. But if any verbiage is confusing, if anything, like you say, you want to see some coloration of it, I can certainly do that. But I'd also stand for any questions right now you may have.
I have one going back to staff development. Can you explain to us, when you talk about relevant staff development, what does that mean to you?
Well, what it means to me might be different than what it means to staff. And so that's a very personal question, right? Right? But what it means to me, and how we define it, is, is it relevant? Can I use it in my work? Does it support my work right now? Or is it just, I have to learn about this because everyone's learning about this? We want that to be, we want it to be something that teachers feel like they can use in their classroom to support their students. Now, that can be challenging when you have a kindergarten teacher at the same meeting as a high school algebra teacher, the same meeting as a FIAD teacher, or special, you know, pick your discipline. However, one of the things that, and I would say that Brooke McGuire does an exceptional job of this, working with principals, the way they set up choice boards and the way they set up opportunities for staff to do different things on those days, really helps enhance that relevancy. Everyone has to do the must-dos, there are things we have to do. But then there are certainly parts of the day when you get to do what is best for you, or you think is best for you, and that enhances the relevancy. There is certainly a place for general knowledge, certainly a place to grow my information, you know, core, but staff development is time that we spend away from kids, and time that our teachers spend not working in their classroom on stuff either. So if it's not something that they can use in their classroom, we don't want to spend time doing that. So that's why we're measuring it.
Well, I think one of the hard parts, and you've already alluded to it, is you have a kindergarten teacher sitting next to a special education teacher, next to a junior math teacher. How do you have staff development for all three of them that's relevant to them? I mean, you do the best you can, and hopefully you can, but it's not easy.
Right. And it's not going to be a home run every time.
Nope.
You know, but you try to do the best you can, like you said, and get feedback. And we fortunately have, we have a professional growth and development committee. I think you're the board member on that committee right now. So some of those meetings are, boy, that really could have gone better, and some of those meetings was, that was great. And then we take that feedback and move on, move forward.
And I'll say, those meetings, they spend a lot of time talking about what happened in the last one, what was good and what was not. And people there give feedback to Brooke, and they brainstorm a lot on what works and what they could change, what they could do better. So there's a lot of effort put towards that.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions on the vision card? Okay.
Okay, we're good.
My second item is a logistics question from election canvassing, and this is something that the calendar this year didn't do us any favors in terms of it working in a regular meeting. So we are required to have a school board meeting to canvas the election results and officially, meaning we look at what everybody got and announce the winners at that. And it has to happen between the third and the 10th day after the election. So the election is Tuesday, our work session on the 7th is Thursday, so that's two days. So we can't do it that time, it's not time yet. We wouldn't have the regular meeting again until the 21st, which would be past the deadline of when we have to do it. So essentially, we have a couple of different options, and I just want to see what the board wants to do. We could have a special board meeting at some point between that Friday and sometime the next week to do a quick election canvas, and it would be the only agenda item we could meet. And because there's three candidates for three spots, it probably would be a relatively quick meeting in that regard, but it was something we have to do. We could do it that way. We could also move the work session from the 7th back a week to the 14th. That falls in the window, and then have a regular, a quick special meeting at the end of that work session to canvas those election results, we could do that. I'm going to throw an idea out there, we need, because it's three candidates for three spots, unless there's a rigorous write-in campaign, we kind of know where we're heading, we need a quorum to do this. And so I've seen districts do like a 10:00 AM that Friday morning after, on the 8th, maybe, if four or more of you could come. So there's options that way too. But I want to leave it to you, Dave, we could do it the Tuesday, the 12th, a quick meeting at 5:30. There's lots of things we could do, but I would, we need to do it, obviously. So I'd have to see what the board's preference is.
Any thoughts on that?
If you've already planned your calendar for the 14th, moving it might seem easier, but maybe it's not, so the work session, I mean.
I would, I would think moving, just moving our work session back a week would be fine, because as we move, this meeting is late, so.
True.
That would give us, that would give us a little bit of time between now and our work session, you know, so that would be my opinion, but.
Okay.
I'm open to anything.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I'm okay with any of those options. I think in the interest of not having to pull us all together multiple times, moving the work session makes the most sense, it just depends on if that works with everyone's schedules, but.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to reduce who could attend the meeting, but.
Right.
But again, if it works for most, we could, for all, we could do that.
Well, if we moved the work session from the 7th to the 14th, does that mean anybody couldn't make the 14th? Do you have a conflict?
I'm probably keeping it on a Thursday.
That, I mean, that works, the 14th works for me.
That's okay? Okay. Adita? Okay. Grab?
I think we have a finance committee that.
We do.
As well, so.
Yeah.
One after the other.
Okay, very good. So there's no formal action needed, we'll just make sure we advertise differently.
Do we have to have a motion then to move to the meeting, or?
When we get to the, let's see.
No, yeah, you just got to notify.
We just notify, because we formally approved the schedule in January at the org meeting, and then we would just notify of.
And now it'll be a work session with.
Of a work session with a busy meeting at the end.
Okay.
We just have to adjust.
Don't need a motion, and we're going to move the workshop meeting from the 7th to the 14th?
No, we don't need a motion. We don't need a motion on it.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, okay.
Cool.
All right. So.
Yeah, because I remember the last time we moved it, we did confirm with MSBA that it wasn't an action needed, it was just advertising appropriately.
Yep. As long as it's like the 72 hours.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. So our next work session will be on Thursday, November the 14th. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sarah, your first report.
All right. So this is the end of my third work day. I don't have a lot of specifics to give you as far as a financial update, but I just wanted to share that, you know, the three days have been really great, like I've really enjoyed working with the district office team. They've been really great about taking me by the hand and saying, here's what you need to do, and walking me through the processes that have been set up. So I've enjoyed that, and I know there's still more for me to learn. One of my other focuses is to dive into the 23-24 audit and work on wrapping that up with the auditors. There are things that, you know, Matt did, and there's still things that need to be finished up for the auditors, so that is another one of the things I want to focus on, to get that wrapped up and ready to present to the board as soon as possible.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right.
Yeah. And that's what I asked, is what are your, share your first impressions, we know right now. As far as looking back in previous years too, I mean, we have not, we don't have anything different that would be out of the ordinary for revenues or expenditures at this time of the year. Going through there, we know the levy's upcoming, there's been no change on the, since we've talked about that. The other thing too, I would just, we're just bringing your attention to, when you have time to click in there, you see we are doing well enrollment-wise. And I did, I did pull it again today and, and just as of, since this was pulled, I think we are at 1738, I think today as opposed to, I think 1743 is in your packet when that snapshot was done, but still trending higher than we, we had been projecting for this fall. We know that that tends to creep its way down as the school year goes on. So we'll see how that rolls. And in the next few weeks here, when some of our students may, may head back south, we'll see how that goes. But so far, so good on enrollment as well. You can see that team is holding pretty steady. Sacred Heart's a little lower than it has been the last few years, but otherwise we're, we're holding steady where we need to be.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to committee and board member reports. So Lissa, you want to start us off, please?
I had a community ed advisory meeting. We just talked about new offerings for classes and how to drum that up. Nothing really new there. And then a finance meeting, but I'm not going to add anything to that, so.
Okay. Darren?
I had policy and facility. Policy, just some standard, nothing crazy on there. I think we'll go through them. I don't think anything changed on that. And, and then facility, we took a little tour today at Hartley and just seen how the building's being used and just talked about what's on.
Okay.
Same here.
Same here?
Yep.
Do you have any thoughts on Hartley now that, well, I know you've been over there, but from your tour today?
No, I mean, my, my kids have been in there recently. So I mean, I've kind of seen it in the last few years, but it's, well, it's, it's a building being, they're using it. I mean, there's not too many empty corners, so.
No. No.
The custodial staff has did an excellent job of cleaning it up. I thought it was super cleaned today. I was impressed. I was impressed and.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Adida?
We had superintendent committee and we reviewed Eric's goals and process, how he's doing and he showed us the progress and we are on track. He's doing a great job.
Okay. Julie?
We had the DAC meeting, which feels like it was a long time ago, but it wasn't that long ago. But Eric certainly went over the vision card goals. We also did review the district MCA scores and we're inching, we're closing that gap between us and the state and definitely making progress. Positive talk about enrollment, fall assessments are positive. Talked about it was the world's best workforce and what is it called now again?
Career and civic readiness?
I know. They need to come up with a nice clever name for that because.
I think CCR. So if we don't get confused with the music band.
Oh, okay. That'll work. CCR. So the goals for that, which we always go through in December. So, but yeah, so a good meeting. And then, yeah, the facility, last month we met with facility, we, Jeff and Eric shared, we had asked for how much square footage per student we were using compared to other districts and the consensus, well, the revelation was we're pretty similar to other districts. So that didn't really help answer any questions, but it was good to have that information. And then going to Hartley today was, was really useful and just seeing how the space is being used, thinking about how the space could be reused, even using the same building. There's definitely a lot of potential there and it just gives everyone lots of ideas and still doesn't answer any questions, but so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Grant?
I was also in the DAC committee. You covered that. Finance, we did talk some about the audit. I think I was going to note that and enrollment and some of the Southwest Metro possibilities and things of that were some stuff we covered. Professional growth and development I had earlier this week. I think I already said that before. They spend a lot of time reviewing prior days and what, what can be improved for the next ones and also what they're trying to plan for the next year for budget wise, because I think some of their budget numbers were from, older from the past and things changed. So they, a lot of discussion about how we best use the options we have. So I compliment that group. It's a really good group of people who really have a passion and want to keep making that better. So they do a great job.
Okay. You want to start us off with the recognitions, positive board feedback?
Sure. Of course, lots of fall sports are finalizing various parts of their season. Some are still in it, some aren't. So congratulations to all them. And the tennis team went to state, which has been a number of years for that. And there's an individual at state as well. So congratulations to them. October 2nd was National Custodians Day. So as Charlie said, they do a great job of making sure our schools are safe and healthy and clean. So thank you to them. Also just put in a plug that of course, November 5th is our date of vote. So everyone who can vote should go vote. We live in a country that gives us that opportunity and we should take it and use it. So please go vote.
Julie?
I have two things. I enjoy seeing every month the brilliant Blue Jays and stellar staff recognitions from Hartley. I love it that they posted on Facebook, but it's also printed in the paper every month. So that's kind of fun to see that. And I think it's great that they recognize both students and staff for showing or being great examples of the Blue Jay Way. And it's kind of, I just think it's a, a great building culture that they have, that they're building there. So, and then it was, this was posted on Facebook this week, but I'm excited to see this collaboration for our CNA students with South Central Service Co-op so that they can have access to lab practicums. And Eric shared that we are a pilot program for this. And I think that's a really, really cool that we get to be on the forefront of providing access to classes like this for our students, so.
Okay. Thank you. Adida?
I would like to say thank you to the parents of the football boys team because every, every time we have home game, they cook or we cook for the boys. And it's just a lot of food and a lot of people involved. And I just would like to say thank you for all the moms and dads who helping to make it work.
All right. Thank you. Charlie?
Well, I've been missing an action. So being out of the country for over three weeks, I've not, I've not seen a lot of action around the school, but everything looks like it's up and operated in good shape. So pass on to.
Okay. I think a lot, a lot of good things covered here. Um, you know, I want to say thanks to John Hanson and his, his group there for just doing the debates and whatnot, just to get the information out there to the public. It's a pretty neat thing for the kids to be able to go through.
Okay. Lissa?
I just want to add Jen Pop had her art students downtown painting the windows. So it looks nice and festive downtown for Halloween. So they did a great job.
Okay. I was going to mention that too, that our team has been decorating storefronts downtown for Halloween. So they don't normally get recognized for much. So glad you brought that up. And then Tuesday I helped serve lunch at the intermediate school. Today I helped serve lunch at Hartley. And I want to say thank you to all the food service staff because they really, when you think of all the kids and staff, they feed every day at their school. And especially I was reminded at Hartley today, talking to the custodians about how many times Scott Johnson is the, the head custodian down there now. And he was telling me he has to partially or fully set up and take down the gym, the lunchroom four times a day. So I just thought to myself, well, that building's 65 years old. And if you set it up and tear it down four times a day and you've got, I don't know, 170 some days the kids are there, how many times that's been done over the years? So want to say thank you to the food service staff and the custodial staff, especially there at Hartley. Our two student reps are in Mankato. Colin did send me a email here, so I'm just going to read it for everybody. Says, hi, Alan and I are at an honor choir performance today, so we won't be able to make it to the meeting. We are so grateful for the different musical opportunities that the school provides. We sent approximately 30 students to MSU event today, which is amazing. Here's some student updates. Our marching band indoor morning rehearsals have started. We're excited, we're excited to perform our show entitled Elemental, Elemental on November 7th, 8th to 9th. South Dakota State Choir will be doing a choral workshop with our select choir on October 29th. We are super excited about that. And Lindsay Kapatsky is in that choir. Science Olympiad season has begun. Practice starts this Saturday. Minnesota Honor Society will have our new inductees ceremony on November 6th. Shout out to the refinery 507 for hosting the football team before the sections game on Saturday. And shout out to the girls tennis team for an amazing season. Thanks, Colin Detmer, Alan Kapatsky. Okay. We'll move on to our.
Now, really quick, since we were talking about teams going to state, but the girls, the girls cross country team qualified for state today. So that was pretty nice.
Okay. Joe Hadivar was in here before most of you got here and he did mention to us that, that a couple of the girls had.
No, the whole team.
The whole team did make it? Okay.
So that's, that's a really big deal to have the whole team go. So, yeah.
All right. Well, let's move on then to our action items. Motion for item A.
I'll make a motion to approve the fall 2024 lane changes.
Okay.
Let's present it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve item A, approve fall 2024 lane change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item B, acknowledge assurance of compliance with state and federal law.
Yeah. So, so each year we're asked to assure to the state of Minnesota, Department of Education, that we're in compliance with state and federal employment laws, that we're following all of our training that we need to do. We have to turn in the number of staff that are, that are working with us each year, what our policy states as far as support and professional development for them and make sure they do that. So this, this used to be a number of years ago, something that the board would approve each year. It's moved to something that now I just submit online on behalf of the district. However, I just think it's a nice thing to continue to stay on here as an acknowledgement item so that you are all aware and our community is all aware, we follow the law. We're in compliance with all those things. And, and it's, and it is, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's something we have to stay with. So this fall was our, our three year bullying renewal, so where everybody needs to be re, retrained. And we had our, one of our legal partners come down and do a different bullying training this fall, which was a partnership in, in, with them. And so we work hard on this to make sure our staff knows what they need to do and we follow what they need to do. So, so that's just an acknowledgement for this evening to make sure that we're, before I click the button, that the board is in the loop on that. Also just real quickly on, on item A, if you have a chance to look through that list, that's a pretty healthy list of staff who have master's degrees or higher. And we find that twice a year that we have staff really advancing their learning. And that's a, that's a big deal for our district that our staff continues to, to grow and learn as educators. So thank you for them for, for doing that. It's a nice lane change for them contractually, but it does make them better, better with our kids. So it's a positive thing too, so.
Do you know what percentage of our teaching staff has a master's degree or higher?
It's just about half.
About half?
Just about half. Yep.
Okay. And I would imagine a lot of the rest of, well, some of the rest of them are working on it, so.
Yeah. I will tell you that one thing that has been actually helpful with this REDACT training is the letters training, there can be some graduate credit earned through that, which helps staff advance in the lane change as well as become stronger in that literacy instruction.
Do you know how that compares with other schools?
I don't. I don't.
No idea.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve item C.
I would like to make.